Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council Special Meeting and Executive Session, March 3, 2022. Going to get a roll call?
Buck Holtz, President.
Holloway, Present.
Bennett, Present.
O'Brien, Present.
Grossman, Present.
Fulmer, Present.
Let it be known, we've established a quorum. I'm going to ask you all to rise for a moment, so I would pledge allegiance, but when we stand, I would like to ask, have a bite, to just keep the people in Ukraine, in your thoughts, prayers, good vibes, whatever it is, please keep our leaders in your thoughts and all the two, because it's very important.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anybody signed up, Ms. Libby?
Yes, Lorraine Huckler.
Who'd you say?
Lorraine Huckler.
Lorraine?
Lorraine.
Lorraine.
For public comments.
Public comments. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Lorraine Huckler, 7267 Chesapeake Drive in Exmoor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Two weeks ago, we had the first opportunity to hear from the PPEA consultant and Virginia American Water. And at the town hall meeting, the town manager urged patience. It was still early in the negotiations. But here we are, two weeks later, entering into negotiations. So I want to talk about the elephant in the room, the annexation agreement that obligates preserved communities, Bay Creek, Bay Mark, to contribute funds to expand the plants as they build more houses and demand increases. This issue is real. The wastewater plant is already limiting volumes on summer weekends. The language in the annexation agreement is clear, whoever owns a development must provide funds for the future build out. But I have some questions. Will Preserves liability transferred to the new owner, or will it release them from the requirements of the annexation agreement? The town manager said the funds in the escrow account for plan expansion would not be transferred to VAW. Is this true, or is it a negotiation item? Would VAW discount their offer based on the disposition of these escrowed funds? Does the town have a legal opinion regarding the town's liability with respect to the annexation agreement? And how can the town be confident that VAW wouldn't sue the town for their escrowed funds or for Preserves liability when the time for future expansion occurs? Finally, I want to caution the council about treating the current rate projections as accurate. They're not accurate, they're a projection by the PPEA consultants. VAW made some promises that rates would decrease and then increase, except that rates would decrease after rate consolidation took effect. And rate consolidation means spreading the operating costs and capital costs across all rate payers. And they're mostly for infrastructure. Compared to other service areas, Cape Charles is a stranded utility with the smallest rate payer base and service area. In the long term, rate consolidation will not keep rates low in Cape Charles. If you look at the past rate increases for VAW, it's likely that Cape Charles, with the lower-than-average capital and infrastructure costs, could be subsidizing costs for other systems. I reviewed the commission's granted, the granted rate increases. Ready? 2008, 9%. Two years later, 14%. Another year later, 6% increase. Four years later, 10% increase. Three years later, 3%. And in 2021, they asked for a 28% increase. It's been requested but not approved. Municipal officials from all these districts, because it covers all the districts, have been protesting these increases with little or no effect. When we talk about loss of control over rates, this is what it looks like. And I have a graph, a chart. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up, and I did not receive any comments in writing prior to.
All right. Thank you very much. Item four, special meeting order of business, amendment to the HBA contract, architectural services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you're aware, we're in a process of trying to evaluate our space needs, and as part of that, we needed to do a condition analysis of the different structures. In discussions with the architect and with staff, we realized to get a full picture of what our options are, we should include all of our facilities. And the one facility that was left out of the analysis was this building, which was the civic center. Regardless of whether we include this in any office space reallocation, getting a current condition analysis of the building is prudent. Doing it as part of this is very cost-effective, because they're already engaged. One of the, you know, many options that we'll discuss at a work session is if we are going to have any portion of a new build, perhaps building a better, bigger meeting space for council meetings. If that's the case, then this building becomes available for other purposes. So just to make sure it's all, everything is in the mix, and all the options are on the table, we requested a quote to have the analysis of this building done. And so that's what's before you right now, a change order that would, or amendment to the contract, that would allow this facility to be evaluated. So I would recommend approval.
I got a recommendation. Want to get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we amend the HBA contract for inclusion of civic center for the $9,783.
Second.
We got a motion, we got a second and a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, item B, consideration to move the negotiation phase of the potential utility sale.
So I think we're pretty well versed in this one, Mr. Mayor. Just to recap, we've been in process for a long time evaluating whether or not the sale of our utilities could be in the town's best interest. We've been through quite a lot of due diligence already. We've hired a consultant specializing in this area to advise the council on this. We've had meetings in executive session when it regarded proprietary information, and we've had meetings in public to include two town hall meetings. And I know each of you have been in contact with members of the public even outside those meetings. So as I've kind of explained before, where we're at in the process now is, now that we've heard from the public, the next stage, next spot, would be to nail down some of the details. If the council is still, if it still desires to take the next step, the next step would be authorizing me to sit down and start hammering out some of these details, to bring back an agreement that would answer all of the questions that was in the comments you heard earlier tonight. It doesn't commit us to anything, to sit down and negotiate doesn't commit us to anything, it just allows us to provide the public with more details. So I am at your disposal and seek your direction.
Okay, we got a motion?
I have a question on the staff report. Costs associated with this, and are we hiring consultants to assist us?
Yes. So the consultant we already have under contract, when we put out the RFP, we have a provision for them to do this next step. It's not included in the original price, because we didn't know if you were going to do that. So there will be additional costs, but those costs will be passed on to the company.
That's part of the $50,000 or whatever that they have said they were going to provide.
Correct. And there's even provisions within PPEA to go above that. And so I think as long as we're all working in good faith, I have no concern that the costs, this cost will not be borne by the town. The cost will be borne by the company. Oh, and the other thing, just want to make sure it's clear, is that when the consultant put together his proposal, there's lots of different expertise here, right? No one person can do it all. So we have someone who's an expert in utilities, we have someone who's an expert in appraisals, and then we also have a legal component, which we have not touched yet. So we would activate the legal part of this. So we have people who would help us figure out the annexation agreement and the ins and outs, and someone who can help us craft a comprehensive agreement that was in our best interest.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. So we get to the stage where you're going to develop, you're going to start on some negotiations, and then when does it come back to the public, as far as like?
Whenever we get it done. So this could take a little while, because as has been mentioned, we have the annexation agreement to deal with that involves a third party. And when that happens, who knows how long that might take? So I'm not going to make any promises on how soon I can get it back. But once it does come back, it would be my recommendation that, yes, we put it out there publicly, the public gets to review it, I would recommend a public hearing. You listen to what they have to say, and then you consider it.
Perfect. I wasn't as concerned on quick timing, but the process, so that everybody knows the next steps.
All right, can we get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we move to the next phase of this PPEA process and authorize the town manager to start negotiations.
Second. Got a motion, got any discussion?
Well, I think, like the questions we heard tonight, most of the questions I heard during the town halls were things that could only be answered once we had gone through the next stage and seen what the details of a sale would look like. So I mean, I think to be able to answer the public's questions, we have, we need to do it. I don't really see that there's much alternative. Like John said, it doesn't commit us to anything, it just commits us to getting more information and be able to answer the public's questions.
There's a line in the staff report I'd like to emphasize. Not until formal negotiations are completed can we know the specifics necessary to determine if an actual sale would be in the town's best interest. So starting negotiations or doing this, approving this action tonight, doesn't commit us to anything. It only allows us to get more and better information. So I just want to be sure everybody understands that.
So I actually got a question for council, and this is just a question, just thinking I might, should one of us elected officials sit in on these negotiations? Should that be called? Speak up, Sisley. I'm sorry. Anyway, I have a question, just a question, just thinking I might here. Should one of us elected officials sit in on negotiations, does council think that's something that should be done? And if so, would you want to appoint somebody to sit on negotiations? What would that ask?
I would ask John what he thinks, because I certainly, I would lean to your opinion.
I don't oppose the concept, I'm just trying to think through the logistics of making it work. Some of it is, I mean, it's not all going to be, whoever, if you want to do it and someone volunteers to do it, they would have to be available to me on pretty quick notice, because some of it isn't going to be necessarily negotiations with the company, but some of it may be discussions with our legal team, or with our consultant, or, you know, it's a dynamic process. So if you want to do it, and someone wants to volunteer to do it, I can really, I need, we need someone who could be very responsive on short notice.
And would that affect their ability to then vote on it, or would that not be an issue?
I don't think it would be a problem.
We can't hear, we cannot hear anything what you're saying.
Oh, sorry, I just asked if that would pose any conflict with that person then voting on the decision, the agreement. And I didn't think it would, but I wanted to ask.
Well, I would expect that we're going to be kept apprised of these negotiations as they go along. It's not going to be, you're going to finish it up and then come tell us what you did.
That's true, too.
That's true. So should you vote any affirmative on this motion, then I've requested an executive session tonight for you to outline your expectations for such a negotiation going in. As we develop this, we'll have other executive sessions in which I will involve all of you, and before we.
Well, I should too. Okay. We got a motion, we got a second, any more discussion?
John, how long do you expect the negotiations to go on? It's like a year?
Well, I hope not a year.
If you say years, we're going to have problems.
If it wasn't for that third party, bringing that third, that's the wild card, I just don't know how long, if it was just between us and the company, I think we could get there fairly quickly, weeks, a month, or maybe, not weeks, at least a month, maybe two. And then there's a long process with, yes, assuming we even reach an agreement, even if you were okay with it, then we get the whole SEC process to go through, and that can take a very long time. So this isn't going to happen very quickly.
Yeah, I looked at the Waverly plan, you know, went onto the SEC site there and pulled up material there, and it's still kicking around. The overall agreement upfront, dealing with how much capital, rate structure is not visible, that's part of the SEC submittal that is held confidential. So it's interesting to say we can share that when we know it, well, you may not. And I'm not sure how that all works, but all I'm saying is I could not find material in their submittal, other than confidential nature that they just, you know, didn't provide. But they did have the public meeting, hearing that was needed prior to the submittal to SEC. And in there, again, they had a chart similar to one what we've seen, that indicates here is where Waverly's rates are going, and here's where the dip. And eventually, meeting out nine or 10 years, and crossing over Waverly's held constant rate. So it doesn't say that Waverly itself won't raise rates over time, but that's all that I was able to obtain, and we'll see just how much we have the ability to share that aspect with the public.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? All righty. Town manager comments?
I have no comments tonight, Mr. Mayor.
If council don't mind, I think I'm going to go first tonight. So just tied four years ago, to sit down and come up with a notion to run for mayor, and here I am. So I've been part of this town, and started as harbor master since 2005. Done a lot of work with a lot of good people over the course of that time, met a lot of good people, learned a lot from a lot of smart people. It's truly, it's been a good ride, but I'm going to say that I'm not going to seek reelection. I can honestly say that these six people that are sitting up here by me right now, and some of the other council members I've worked with, has been some of the smartest, dedicated people to this town I know, and I think you'd be crazy not to reelect them once it's up. With that being said, I think for the town to move forward, you need to let the mayor that's going to have a forward-thinking process, not be stuck in the past, not what Cape Charles was. Cape Charles is not that anymore, we're moving forward. And somebody's got to be up here and be part of this team, and not be against it. So I would like the citizens to think about that when they go to the ballots, and put somebody in this place that's going to continue moving this town forward. With that being said, I thank you all. It's been good, a part of life. Come January, I'll probably say, what the hell am I doing? Anyway, it's, it's, it would take four years, I need some me time. And I'm not going to relax running four years from now, but I just need some time for me.
Two years from now? There's going to be another election.
That ain't enough time. Mr. Buck Holtz?
Actually, I do have something to say tonight. I want to give a big shout out to Preserve Communities for what they've done for this overall community on the eastern shore. They've had two big fundraisers, one for the North Hampton Education Foundation, who wish they raised $65,000 for the North Hampton Education Foundation to generate some much-needed money for some of the teachers and activities for the children of this area. And two, the last one they just did for Habitat for Humanity, they raised over $40,000. So that's a hell of a partner to have with this town. So I just want to give them a big shout, because as I've always said, this is one big community, and it was divided a long time ago, but it is cohesively coming together as a big group of people that really care about this community. And they don't get recognized that much, so I just wanted to give them a big kudos for what they've done.
Pastor Warden Holloway?
I don't really have anything, other than I know it was hard to come to your decision tonight, and I think you've done an amazing job over the past few years, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. I know we're not done yet, we have another six months or so still, but I think it really shows your leadership at letting people know tonight, so that the town can work and the citizens can work together to figure out who's the best person to fill those shoes. And I thank you for your hard work.
Well, thank you very much.
Can you talk to the Kip to Beacon?
I can. I'll try to keep it clean. I talked to Libby about this earlier, so since I'm on public record, I'll be kind. I went to the planning commission meeting for the county on Tuesday evening, it's my first.
Town, you're tired of red.
Yes, it was quite, it was interesting. And several folks turned in public comments on the possibility, the text amendment agenda item on changing zoning in certain areas to accommodate pretty much long-term rental versus short-term rental. This was prompted by, there is a person, there's a company who has a contract in, on the Kip to Beacon, to convert it into multifamily housing, workforce housing. And can't tell you how excited that many of us were to do that. So it was an agenda item as a text amendment, and, you know, you look at the people who are sitting up there, and you put yourselves, because we know that situation. Unfortunately, it was not set up successfully presented in order for the commissioners to really make a good decision that evening. The county administrator did get up and speak in favor of it, the company that's interested in buying this property did a wonderful presentation, but unfortunately, the, just the steps were not set up appropriately to make that decision. And I certainly supported that by the commissioners. So they're doing a work session on March, whatever, that Tuesday, I guess 15th, maybe, to do it, and then in hopes to vote on it on the April meeting, in hopes that that contract is not lost, kind of along the way. I do want to commend all of us, because one of the things that was very eye-opening to me is there were several letters that were put in, submitted to be read into the record, and after three of them, the commission decided they were too exhausted to listen to the rest of them, mine being one of them. I was personally offended. Yeah, so I was like, I've been here hour and a half now, what do you mean? So anyway, they regretted that, because I then just raised my hand 10 minutes later and then spoke. But I just thought it was interesting, and I commend all of us, because no matter what the opinions are, we take the time to listen to the people who come before us or submit something. Sometimes those have been 30 or more public, you know, submissions. There was only four, and they couldn't read all four. I was disappointed in that, because I, we are really, this is important to Cape Charles, this particular issue. So I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, no, that's good. Keeps everybody informed as to what's happening. You slapped him in the hand for that.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yep, I didn't have anything until you made your announcement. I certainly am in agreement with your decision for your reasons. I don't agree with you leaving, however, I respect your decision to move on and wish you the best. But don't forget, there is another election in two years, you don't have to wait four years. So thanks for everything you've done. You've been an unbelievable mayor. I've been up here 12 years, 13 years now, and, you know, I'd put you up against anybody.
Make me cry.
Let me keep talking there.
I've not been up here long enough to complain about you. But it certainly hasn't been fun.
You still got eight months.
I was happy to see that the beach, and we might want to mention that, that the beaches can be closed next week for cleanup. I was going to mention that at the Monroe entrance, there's these channel posts.
We can't really hear you, I'm sorry.
There's channel posts coming through the sand on the beach at the Monroe entrance, and they're sticking through a couple inches or so. They're kind of dangerous, they are dangerous. So I'm hopeful, I sent an email to John, just to mention, perfectly timed with the email coming out saying, you know, it was in the beach, so that's all I have.
Congressman Grossman?
I'm like Steve, I've submitted a good decision to Smitty earlier today, so my thoughts were with him, and I'm hoping that we get another Orioles fan in your position there, so we can give you grief.
If they ever play.
There you are, if they play. Couple things, town manager evaluation is coming up, so in the next couple days, you'll see something issued by me. I'm going to try a different method to collect it, so I don't have to redo scribble and try to decipher what those are, when I pull them all together.
My fault.
The accessory dwelling unit, the planning commission worked on that, and we've agreed to bring it to council, not for approval or whatever, but to really inform you of where we have gotten with it, we're almost there, and for you to refer it back now to planning commission for public hearings and so forth, going through the process. So you'll see ADUs coming with some changes. And then the last thing I had was, the Harbor Area Review Board met last night, and the chair nominated was Stuart Smith, and the vice was Diane Diamico. Just wanted to make that announcement and thank them for stepping up, and for the new board members, really, that had been elected, nominated into that particular board. That's all.
Congressman Fulmer?
I didn't really have anything until a few comments. One, I hope the public will be engaged on the hearings on the accessory dwelling units, I get lots of questions about it, and now that it's been in implementation for a little while, I think people, it's raised a lot of questions with people of how it's supposed to work, people with space they already have, with space they're planning to build. So I hope the public will be engaged on that, and get answers to those questions and give feedback. And then also, yes, thank you, Smitty. I'll be sorry to see not returned, but I understand the reasons, and thank you for your timing, because I think it is something that, it's a lot of work, and people need a long time to consider, and for us to be able to make good choices, so thank you for that, and for your four years of service, and your long service to town before that.
Thank you. I do have one more thing. Saturday. Oh, yes, Saturday.
Yes.
If you've got arms and legs, Beach Pavilion at 9:10.
10:00.
10:00 a.m. They join us to clean up, clean up the sections of town. Us bunch is going to, well, Andy is going to cook, we're all going to just smooth like we typically do at the park. We've got some live music playing, that's at noon, I think, or 12:30, 12:30? So come on out to the park at 12:30, but come on down and meet us at the Beach Pavilion at 10:00, and help us clean our lovely town up. You know, Cape Charles' birthday was Monday, I think Monday, today's Tuesday, it was Tuesday, so that's what we're celebrating.
So if I'm cooking, do I have to clean?
Yeah. Clean first.
Yeah, but wash your hands after you're done.
Look, I stand there looking, it makes it look like Paul just caught a dapple, so he makes sure it's the relish.
I'm the QC guy.
He's got a graph, Paul's got a graph sheet.
Paul's been the QC guy for the last two years. He samples the first dog off the ground.
Okay, with that being said, can I get a motion to go into closed session, Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A, paragraph three, discussion or consideration of the disposition of public-held real property. of public-held real property, real properties, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body, specifically negotiating strategy referenced potential sale of water and wastewater utility systems.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, can I ask the members of the public to leave the room, please?
Thanks for coming.
Yep, thank you all. Invite the members back in the room, please, Ms. Libby.
Did you yell?
Nobody's outside? Shucks. Anyway, can I get a motion to go back into open session?
So moved.
So moved. Can I get a motion to, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I get a motion to certify, certification to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under this chapter, and two, only such business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was conveyed, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body. Roll call vote.
Buckholz, yes.
Holloway, yes.
Bennett, yes.
O'Brien, yes.
Grossman, yes.
Fulmer, yes.
Let it be noted, unanimous, can I get a motion to stay here all night?
Negative.
No.
All right, then I'll skip again. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?